I think she's the extra.
Here.
So, I'm gonna call this committee of the whole meeting to order. James, it's okay. Give me here. Give me. So, we're gonna go ahead and call this to order. The purpose of the committee of the whole meeting was in regard to the letter that the auditor Jim Stith sent to council on April 20th regarding the expense of $3,083.60 to the city for a summer feeding program. It was sent along with a packet of some information. So, Ms. Wallace is here. Do you, is it preferable that you want her to begin and tell you how this whole thing started? Or how do you want to proceed to your meeting?
Sure.
Okay. Can you tell us, Mrs. Wallace, how this came about?
In 2017, we had a summer feeding program, is what they call it, down at Waterworks Pool for kids in Norwood or anywhere, you know, that came to the pool, for them to be able to get a free lunch. So, we had done that. At the end of that summer, they said that there was an opportunity for one or two of our employees that were going into college the next year to be able to sign up with AmeriCorps and be able to earn money for college, plus we would be able to gain an additional summer feeding site. So, I started talking with the United Methodist Church that runs this in April about that. So, they explained the program.
April of 2018.
April of 2018, thank you, sorry. That, you know, I just needed to sign the paperwork for Waterworks.
Where it had been previously.
Where it had been previously, and the paperwork that I signed just is the agreement that we are gonna serve the lunches in a certain way, a certain time, and that you give all the kids the food. If they don't want it, they have to put it on a table. So, just the details of how the lunch has to be served. So, then Larry, the gentleman in charge of the program, asked if we wanted to do the additional feeding site and get any of our kids onto the AmeriCorps program to where they would be able to earn college money. So, that, there were several emails that went back and forth with that. And, you know, 'cause he explained that they would get $1,800 from AmeriCorps that would be paid directly to the college that they go to. Whoever would do it, they would have to choose, you know, the college and fill out that paperwork and everything. So, you know, AmeriCorps had some, you know, stipulations on who could qualify and all that. So, we went ahead and sent two of our guards that had been working for us for three or four years to send that information to the gentleman. And the other thing was, he said, you know, his people that he has do AmeriCorps, he pays them an additional amount of money. And the AmeriCorps fee was $500 for the kids to be able to do that. They would cover one of them, and I would have to cover the other one. Well, I found someone with a grant that was gonna cover that second $500. So, that meant it would be no cost to the city, because I explained to him in an email that we would pay the additional hours that they worked at the pool. That I didn't want to do that program. I just wanted to do the feeding program and stuff. And so, I was, he said, "Okay," and we went through the summer. Then all of a sudden...
How many hours did they work in the program?
In the feeding program, they did like two and a half to three a day. You know, they get over there, set up, do the program, clean up, and then, you know, done. And we had the site at Waterworks, and then the new site was at the community center. We had a lot of people that were very enthusiastic about letting their kids come up there and eat, because there were a lot of kids that don't get lunch and stuff. You know, and the lunches had always been really good and stuff. So, in August, all of a sudden, I get a bill for $3,000. You know, 'cause I'd asked him several times for the $500 invoice, so that I could get that paid by the person that had the grant that was gonna pay that. And never got it, never got it. Then all of a sudden, here comes this bill. And so, when I started talking, he goes, "Oh, no, no, that's what it is." And so, I kept going back and forth with him, and then he sent it to Joe Gears. So, the agreements that I had signed, and there are three of them, and I believe Leslie copied them. The one is front and back, and it is, it's the agreement for the community center. And all it is, is basically that we agree to serve a certain way, that we agree to serve a certain time, and from when we're gonna start and when we're gonna stop in the summer, and then that you have, you know, that it's an open site. You don't limit it to, you know, by prejudice or anything like that. And then, the one is just an agreement incomplete. It's the same wording and everything. And then the other one is for Waterworks. So, those are the only things that are signed. I was not supposed to receive any invoice except for the invoice that was to go to the person that was paying the $500.
Ms. Hannah.
Thank you, Madam President. This gets real confusing, a lot of it. I've gone through the emails, and I've talked to Larry at UCM or UMC.
Can you pull your microphone towards you? Thank you.
You had just said they got an $1,800 for education. This is what I was told, and I'm just telling you what I was told by Larry several times. I've talked to him. They got an $1,800 living stipend, and that was paid biweekly for 10 weeks, which ends up being $6 an hour. They got a $1,200 education funds at the end of the year, or at the end of the 10 weeks. And if they only worked half of that, they'd get, it's all broken down. And that would add up to about $2 an hour. Then, in the contract, or in all the emails, it states that UMC is gonna supplement with, they ask if they wanted them to, supplement with the $4 an hour, and the city would be required to reimburse that back to UMC. So, it's actually, the kids are, I'm sorry, the employees are making approximately $12 an hour of this. It's not just in education. They apparently received paychecks every two weeks, and it would add up, if you're counting the education, which is, that has to be used within seven years. Without the education, it's $10 an hour. But it does say in all of these that, these emails, that you would have to reimburse UMC for the additional living stipend, plus the one $500 copay. It's stated in all the emails. So, somewhere along the line, you know, we, somebody okayed this being done.
On May 24th, at 10:46, is an email going from me to Larry. And it says, "Okay, I have someone else paying the $500 copay. I just need to get them an invoice. Then I will pay the additional living stipend," which is, meant I will pay the other hours that they work.
The other $4 an hour.
Like, they had a program that they could work 30 hours, get paid from them for 30 hours. And I said, "So, we do not have," it says, "I will pay them so that we do not have to do the reimbursement. That way, it's easier. I just need an invoice for the 500."
So, that would be the additional $4 an hour stipend that UCM paid, or did we pay that, or did they pay it?
They, no one paid that. They got the money from the AmeriCorps, the 1,800.
Okay. Who got that money?
The two employees that did the program.
Okay. Who got, because he's telling me, I'm sorry, what's his name, Mr. Caro, is telling me that the girls also got a check from them for $4 an hour more, that the check, they got checks.
I only know of them getting the one.
Because they've got, they got checks from AmeriCorps, then they got checks from UMC, and then they get the education stipend.
I only knew of the one check they got every couple of weeks, whatever it was.
Well, I think that, I mean, I know, and that's, well, they apparently...
I mean, I didn't see the checks that they got from them.
Okay. Because that's what we're getting billed for. If you look, that's...
But we shouldn't have gotten billed for that, because right there is where I denied that program and said I did not want us doing that. The only thing that we would pay, which it wasn't even us that was gonna pay it, it was a grant that was gonna pay the $500, AmeriCorps.
Well, apparent, I mean, I'm just going by what they told me, and that's what we're getting billed for. And looking at the agreement, or all the emails back and forth, I think it's pretty clear somebody's gonna pay it.
I mean, even when I spoke with him face to face over at the United Methodist Church over in Western Hills off of, I believe that's where it's been, at a meeting, I told him, "No." He says, "We do this for our employees that work for us. We can do it for yours also." And I said, "No," because I could not get into a situation like that.
Yes, Mr. Thompson.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have a copy of the emails in front of me. Would you mind rereading the correspondence that you had where you declined?
It says, "I have someone else paying the $500 copay. I just need to get an invoice. Then I will pay the additional living stipend through us so that we do not have to do a reimbursement. That way, we'd make it easier. I just need an invoice for the $500. Can it work that way? I have a lot of interest in the new feeding site, which is great."
And I'll say like that. I'm only judging by the wording of your statement, but when you say to a person that we will pay the additional amount, it's not clear, it's not abundantly clear to me in that statement that you don't want them to pay it. It sounds to me like you're agreeing to repay the amount that they are going to pay. I understand that's not the intent, but when I heard you read that the first time, I thought, "Oh, well, you agreed to pay it." And even on second reading, it's not completely clear to me that you're not agreeing to pay it. So, I think it could just be a matter of wording and potentially just miscommunication, but I see where the confusion lies, because it sounds very much to me like you agreed to cover those costs.
Mr. Thompson.
I just wanna get a clarification. So, they were, so, in the email that you just read, the email before that that you were responding to, you know, it says, "UMC Food offers..."
Boy, I can't hardly hear you. You're gonna have to speak up.
Oh, yeah, maybe, okay. "UMC Food offers its staff an additional $1,200 living stipend," and this is from Larry to Jenny, "an additional $1,200 living stipend, about $4 an hour to bring their cash stipend up to $10 per hour. Do you wish to offer your folks this additional living stipend?" And then they say, "You would have to reimburse UMC Food for the additional living stipend, plus the one $500 copay." And then in the reply, it said, it looks like you said, "Okay, I have someone else paying the $500 copay. I just need to get them an invoice." Is that, it's in a different font, so I didn't know if that was your words.
Yeah, those are mine up on top.
Okay, okay, just to make sure. So, then, the question in the next line says, you said, "Then I will pay the additional living stipend through us so that we do not have to do a reimbursement. That way, it should make it easier." When you said, "Pay it through us," did you mean like have them on just on the clock as a recreation employee during those hours? Is that what?
Yes.
Is that what "paying through us" meant? Okay. Gotcha. And then, did somebody else ever actually get like that, you said, "I have someone else paying the $500 copay"? I might have missed it in the conversation before. Did somebody actually end up paying that $500 copay?
No, because I never got an invoice for it. That $500 is included in the final invoice.
I'll say I saw that there, that's what I was... Okay.
'Cause I asked for it several times and never got it.
Yes, Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of questions. There's an email on May 24th at 3:02 PM, and it's outlining training. I'm not clear, is this a training that, Ms. Wallace, did you attend this, or was this a training for the AmeriCorps members?
I'll try to find it first. That is a training that the two employees went to.
Okay. Did you ever receive any training on how to be a sponsor of AmeriCorps members?
No. The only training I received was when I went out to the United Methodist Church in Western Hills to learn about, they go through what the program is about, and what all you have to, like, you know, you have to have shelf lunches, and how you have to serve the lunch, and all the rules and laws to that. But we received this, I received this book at that.
So, is the training you went to was more like program administration?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Hannah.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, and if you look on that same email, on, under C, under pay C, "UMC will provide an additional cash stipend for both regular staff and supervisors." Several places in the preview, I mean, I can see why this can get confusing. It says, "In more than one place, you would have to reimburse UMC Food for the additional living stipend, plus the one-time $500 copay." And it's in the last document that I have, the last email. It says it in the, in under C.
I mean, I had told him, "No," because he put it as it was a choice, and I said, "No."
So, you had mentioned that, as you said earlier, that you didn't want to do that portion of the program, because you were electing to cover that extra $4 directly to them. Did the city cover that extra $4 directly to them?
They got paid for the, like, the hours that they worked AmeriCorps. They didn't get paid for those. They got paid for their other hours that they worked for the city.
Okay, so, you told them that you were going to cover the additional four hours of living stipend during the time?
Well, 'cause our grade of pay is not $10 an hour.
I understand, I understand that, but you indicated just previously that you didn't want to, to have them do it, because you would choose to reimburse, not reimburse, but cover that living stipend.
Through the hours that worked for the rent.
Through the hours. But that, that doesn't make sense to me. And it's, and it's just because if, what, the total was, what, $12 an hour through, they got through AmeriCorps?
With education.
With education, without the education.
It was $10.
There's $10 an hour, so, and it was, six was the original, and four was the, to bring it up, living stipend, and then the four. So, we're talking about the $4 an hour. And so, you gave at least AmeriCorps, you gave them the impression that you were going to cover, you, the city, was going to cover the additional $4 an hour that they would have been making had AmeriCorps been covering that cost of living stipend.
So, what's not in here is the conversation when the gentleman was explaining the whole thing to me when I was at U Methodist, out at the church for the training that I had to take, that there are several organizations that do this, but do not pay their people that additional living stipend. He pays the people that are his employees that living stipend. There were other groups that don't pay their stip, that stipend at all. They, they get the AmeriCorps money, and then they get the education money, and then, you know, you as an organization can do what you want. You can either have him do it and reimburse him, or not have anything at all. I had talked to those two employees, because we don't pay that much per hour. And for the college money that they were getting, they were okay with only getting paid through the AmeriCorps for those couple hours every day.
Okay, so...
So, that's why I, I mean...
But I understand that, but it brings a couple, one, you told AmeriCorps that you would be reimbursing them, which we did not. So, my original kind of line was to try to figure out if we had actually paid those employees $4 through AmeriCorps, and also four additional dollars through the city. So, if we had actually done it, what you had said we were going to do, which was pay them additional $4. Now, I understand that we have not paid them the additional $4, so they just got, apparently they got the four, additional $4 through their AmeriCorps pay, but that didn't get reimbursed by the city.
$6.
Yeah, as a point of clarity, I think...
I think $6.
Six.
Six, but...
AmeriCorps, and then four from the other.
Oh, the four comes from the education?
No, no.
Where does the additional four come from?
$6 AmeriCorps, $4 from the Methodist Church.
Okay.
And then $2 for the education.
Understand, so, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Like I said, I don't, I think I'm the only person here who didn't get a printout. The, so, okay, that makes sense. So, one, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't double pay them for, for that particular service. The other thing I wonder is if the employees noticed that they were receiving more money than they should have been. That, it's not a lot of money, but I don't know, at some point, you look at your check and you say, "This is several dollars more than it ought to be." Did any of them ever come to you to say?
No, because they were, they had trouble a couple of times with, like, they were told they'd get paid a certain time, and they didn't. So, the inconsistencies and all that. And then, one had trouble even getting the education stipend that was supposed to be paid.
Okay.
And stuff. So, it, there wasn't a regularity to it like normal paychecks are and that. So, and I've talked to both of them and asked, and they said they haven't, I mean, when you, when you figure out the six times the two hours and how many hours, it adds up, you know, then, I mean, once you kind of figure out taxes.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. So, I had just asked a few minutes ago, what did you mean when you said that you would be reimbursing them directly, and you had indicated that they would be getting paid through hours at the rec center? Like, we thought we just cleared that. And then now you're indicating to the, Mr. Thompson, that they did not get compensated through hours at the rec center.
They got paid for their other hours that they worked and everything. I didn't double pay them.
Well, no, it was just, I just, it seemed that that was new information, because I thought you just said that they were getting paid through the rec center. That's what you intended with the reimbursing them directly, so, you know, I don't have a way to rewind the meeting, but that's just, it was just a confusion on my part, I guess. The second part is, so this, the invoice, I mean, the invoice is dated, that they sent to the Norwood Rec, it says, "Bill to Norwood Rec Center." There's no address on this, but it's dated August 13th, 2018. $3,000, terms net 30, due date 9/12/2018. When did you provide this to the auditor's office?
I didn't, because I was trying to work it out with the gentleman, because I had told him that I didn't want to do it. And then at one point, I wasn't getting any answers back from him and that, and then the next thing I know, Joe, Joe Gears had it.
Yes, at what point, I mean, at what point in this whole process was Joe Gears involved? Like, did he, did he know about the feeding program at the community center, I guess, originally?
That's why I told him that we were doing a feeding program at the community center and adding another site.
Okay, and then, did he know whenever you gave him the, when you got this invoice? I mean, at what point were you, did you tell him that you were fighting with them about trying to?
I forget at what point, to be honest with you.
No, I mean, the...
I can't tell you the date. I just know that it was...
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I don't know, and it was, I guess, the understanding that I was given, and it might not be completely accurate, so anybody can correct me, is that essentially the UMC Food people had contacted the auditor's office or the law department, I don't know which one, somebody, and just saying, "Hey," trying to escalate it, and that's how it was found out about. But, you know, it just noted that it, it's just not a good way to deal with vendors, even if you are still dealing with them, but like it, to just, you know, I guess, I don't know, ignore it or what have you, because it looks bad on the city, so, just hope that noted.
Mr. Clark.
Just going through the emails, was there a, so, the, in response to your email at the 10:46, was there, 'cause you did kind of ask a question to Mr. Caro. Did he respond, answering the question where you say, "I just need an invoice for 500?" 'Cause I kind of read that, that you're saying that, I understand what you're saying there, and then you ask, "Can it work that way?" Did he respond?
I never got another email from you till I got the bill.
Okay, 'cause I can kind, I totally understand what you're saying, 'cause you're kind of responding to his previous email. You're saying, "So that we do not have to do a reimbursement." And then you're asking, "Can it work that way?" So, I was just...
And like I said, when he explained it to me at, when I went to, on April 23rd, when he explained it to me, 'cause that was the day that I was at that church, that God did their training for how to serve and that, and got the book on, with all the information in it. That's when he explained that program, and I said, "Well, that I won't be able to do. I think I might be able to cover the 500. Let me talk to, you know, a couple of people that have grants, that that would be something that probably would work right into their grant."
Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you. Just a follow-up to that comment, Ms. Wallace. What was his response when you said that?
He says, "That's fine. There's plenty of organizations." He even pointed to, there are several, you know, there were several people there, and he says, "There's, you know, there's several organizations that do it that way." I couldn't tell you who they were, because the only person I knew there was Chris Chesley.
Ms. Hannah.
Thank you, Madam President. Can you just tell me, how did you differentiate the hours they were working for the city and the hours they were working, getting paid for by Everheart, or whatever the company's name is?
'Cause they were from their schedules. They weren't scheduled to work like the pool when they were serving the lunch.
Okay. And the reason I ask, and I'm hoping I'm looking at everything, I just don't understand this. I have the time cards from both the city and from Equal Heart for these girls, or from these employees all summer. And it was a 10-week program for 300 hours, and I've gone through the 10 weeks, and I don't understand how, you know, how you differentiate it in the hours. We have some weeks on a time card that says, over a week's period, they were paid 70 out, 70 and a half hours. 57 and five hours, 38 hours, 42 hours, 69 hours, 58, 59. It averages out to 56 for one employee, and I think 58 for the other, a week, hours, for 10 weeks straight.
On recreation time sheets?
Between recreation and the Equal Heart, between the Equal Heart time sheets, you put them, you add them together, and that's what these kids, or these employees were paid for, 70 hours a week, one week. Let me go through that one.
I don't know how they do their time sheets. I've never seen their time sheets.
For the, for Everheart?
Yeah. They did all of their stuff electronic, every day, they turned in their, their time by phone.
Well, you know, they've got nine hours on some data, Everheart. Eight hours, seven hours, nine hours per day, you know. So, it wasn't just an hour or two hours a day that they were claiming. And then on top of that, there are time sheets for that same time period that we paid, the city paid. And that's why I was asking how, you know, who kept those records, and to say when those employees actually worked.
I mean, I kept our records for the pool. I can't, I don't know who kept the other, I've never seen them.
Here, let me look at, um, July 29th to August 4th. They, on a Sunday, nothing for Everheart, three hours for the city in Norwood. Monday, 11 hours for Everheart, five hours for the city, that's 16 hours they worked that day, they claimed. Uh, five hours on Tuesday for both of you. Wednesday, eight hours for, it is Everheart, isn't it, who paid them? And four hours charged to the city. Thursday, eight hours to Everheart, five hours to the city, which means they clocked, or they got paid for 13 hours' work. Um, there are quite a few of these through the whole thing. And it appear, well, I don't want to say what, it's just really questionable how, how these employees can get paid for 70 hours' worth of work for a week. And that's what's happened here. I don't know how many hours you give your lifeguards a week.
Basically 29 a week. 29 hours a week is all I can pay my, my guards.
Okay, there was 29 there. Um, but they can't be getting paid by us and be getting paid by Everheart at the same time. And that's what it appears has happened here.
I've never seen their stuff. I can account for my time sheets.
Who was responsible?
I don't know.
If it's a city program, who's responsible for keeping those records?
I mean, when they got done every day, feeding lunch, they buy phone, I don't even know if I got it on my, on my phone still, I doubt it. There's an app that you turn in, you know, what time they went there, and how many kids they fed, um, how many lunches they, how many lunches they received, how many children were fed, what time they finished, and how many lunches were left over, and if they needed any supplies. And that was done every day, I don't even think I have it on the app, because we didn't do the program this summer. Um, that was done on an app. I'm questioning, did they need, you probably don't know, did they need to, did they need to verify the number of hours they were doing for the, that they called the living, additional living stipend that you were covering? Is that... The, what they were, had to put in was for the lunches for the AmeriCorps.
And you, you expected that they would only be doing two to three hours a day for the lunches?
Pardon me?
You expected they would only be doing two to three hours a day for the lunches?
They usually do, it was two or under that they were doing lunch, because they'd go over there and lunch was only an hour.
Right, and it looks like, if those time sheets are correct, they're submitting some days nine hours, some days seven hours. I know it's not, it might not be your, your job to...
I can answer for somebody else's time sheets, I can only answer for ours. I know that they, and I can't find it this one, and I know it's in here somewhere, the app that was used to go in, because I used it at Waterworks.
Well, just, just, I'm sorry, just to follow up. You said it was a 10-week program, 300 hours.
They could use 300 hours.
They could use 300 hours.
But I believe...
Would they get paid no matter how much?
Well, I believe, if I understood it right, because it gets complicated with everything, that they had to do the, the service of lunch.
Uh-huh.
But then the city could, or they could keep them on up to 30 hours a week, and they would still pay them, even if they, if they were doing city work. So they were going to get paid for 300 hours for 10 weeks. They were required to be doing lunch on those days, whatever it took, and then the other amount was supposed to be, you know, I would hope the city out, not paying them. Did that make sense? I think I confused you.
I think, no, I think, no, that, that makes sense. I'm, I'm just, um...
But there's no way these girls would work in 70 hours a week?
My question is, if they only worked 10 hours a week for AmeriCorps, would they only get paid 10 hours, or were they guaranteed that whole amount either way?
They were guaranteed that, they were...
Okay, that's what I was...
They were supposed to work at the time, though.
Right.
But they got, every other week, they got a set amount of money, is what this, it's in the contracts, it's in here separate times. They got paid biweekly the same amount of money. And they should have worked their 30 hours somewhere in that two week, or each week. Um, and if they were, if they were low on hours, they could work weekends. But it was basically a Monday-through-Friday program.
But on the bill, I'll just point out, on the bill that we received, it was for 300 hours at $4 an hour.
That makes sense.
So, I'm just curious, and I'm throwing it out there, I don't know, and maybe, obviously we need to follow up. I'm wondering if they, at some point in time, they had to justify their stipend, their living stipend or whatever. They didn't get paid for all those hours, at least not from these people.
Yes, they, no, they got the extra $4 from UM Ministry, Food Ministry told me they paid them the extra $4 an hour, they, you know, um, and they said they were supposed to get reimbursed by the city. I don't know what agreement you signed, didn't sign it or didn't know, but they did send the girls the checks.
Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. Um, Ms. Wallace, there's a link in here that says, you know, here is the AmeriCorps application. Did you complete an AmeriCorps application?
I never completed an AmeriCorps application. I was never given one.
Um, on May 22nd, I think this is a email sent to you, it's, the address is N-O-R-E-C-O at AOL.com, and it says, that the last line is, AmeriCorps application is here, and there's an, there is a link.
That was for the employees.
So you didn't fill out an application to have AmeriCorps members at your site?
At the top, it says, the first step is to have your folks fill out the AmeriCorps application. So I don't even know what that app looked like.
Okay, so part of...
I might have looked at it then, but I couldn't tell you now what it looked like.
That's good clarity. I think one of the observations I'm starting to make is, the administration of the AmeriCorps program is separate from the administration of the UMC Food Ministry program, and it sounds like the administration of the AmeriCorps program is what did not get carried out in the way that both parties thought it would. Does that sound fair to you? Because the agreements you provided us with your signature are just about the food and how it's set up, et cetera. So you, we haven't seen anything that you signed saying you would have AmeriCorps members. You're simply, what we see here is you have, you have accepted having AmeriCorps members at your site, your site being the rec center, to do the program. My question then, I guess, would be, um, where, obviously you're saying you didn't sign anything, you didn't want to do this, but where do you think that the, the other party would have gotten the conclusion you wanted to be an AmeriCorps site? Just the fact that you had the people apply?
I guess. I know...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm going to say, I guess, I don't know how they, um, the year before, the first year that we did the program, the people that deliver the food to the sites are all AmeriCorps. Now, I don't know if they worked for UMC also or not. Um, and, you know, that's when I first, I guess, found out about AmeriCorps, that they were involved in it.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, who were the, the people that were getting fed? Um, how was this advertised? Uh, and I guess I just, I've, this is, honestly, when all this came up, the first time I'd ever heard about it at the community center, I'd never, was there any special group that it was targeted towards, or how did we get the word out?
Any of the kids in the neighborhood. We dropped flyers off around the houses in the neighborhood. I took stuff over to the Vineyard, um, to Grace.
Yeah, Marshall, yeah.
Name isn't, last name isn't going to come to my mind. Um, we, the schools did an all-call for us to let us, to let the kids know that there would be lunches at Waterworks and at, um, the community center.
Okay.
And then we also hit it on the recreation flyer, but let me get that.
Mr. Thompson.
I, I don't know how we find this information out, but I would be very, very interested to know if the money paid out by UMC Food Administration was at all, or was at all related to the number of hours submitted on time sheets? Because I could see, I can see that the AmeriCorps says, we're going to give you a flat rate no matter how many hours you work, but the labor reimbursement from UMC Food Ministry is, is for a full, like, they, they worked the full 300 hours during that time. It, it really makes me wonder if UMC Food Ministry had access to time sheets to determine how many hours they needed to pay? Because it sounds to me, like, they're, they're not, I mean, it's, it's $4 an hour over 300 hours, so they're assuming that somebody has worked 300 hours.
I can answer that. It's on page, or on May 22nd, it says that they will be paying the additional stipend of $1,200, which means that they're going to go with the whole 300. They're also paying...
Okay, they're also paying, okay.
It's stated in that email.
Okay, thank you.
We have about four minutes before council meeting needs to start. Mrs. Hanrahan?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I don't want to let all this drop. I, there are lots of concerns with the time sheets, and I'm going to ask Mr. Moore if, um, he has the time sheets, he has copies of the time sheets, or his office does. Um, I, you know, I, there's not much we can do from council here.
I don't think we do.
Um, yes, I have, I sent them to Tim Gary.
Oh, okay, then I guess we do.
Yeah, you do. And I confirmed he had them this week.
Okay.
And I was wondering if, if you, if your office would look into this further.
To look into specifically what?
The number of hours they were paid by the city.
Oh, okay.
And if they were getting paid double for hours.
Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, I know that our time is short. Um, at this point, I, I think there's a question mark in my mind's eye about the implementation of the AmeriCorps program. I'm understanding there was no specific training around that, and I'm wondering if we can send a letter asking the ministry folks to respond with what their understanding is, if they have any documentation we haven't seen. My concern is that, even if we vet the checks and the hours to get the right match, somehow it seems in their eyes that Ms. Wallace communicated an agreement. And I think the issue at hand is, was an agreement that was not authorized entered into. And so, um, I did have another question, but knowing that we're short on time, I'd like to suggest we find out from their point of view what documentation they're relying on, if it's just these emails to say we owed them money. I understand that this was an invoice provided to Mr. Gears, but I don't have in front of me any other communication that was given to him. And I also would like to suggest, um, in addition to what Mrs. Hanrahan said, that we revisit this at another time, once we have more information.
Any other comments, questions before we adjourn? Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, for the next time we meet, I'd also like to have a copy of the AmeriCorps agreement that the employees signed.
I'm sorry, I...
I'd like to have a copy of the, of the, the forms and agreement that the employees signed with AmeriCorps. I'm curious if maybe there was something on there, a checkbox or something, that would indicate knowingly or unknowingly that, that they were agreeing to something that maybe they weren't.
All right. Mr. Thompson?
Um, thank you, and I know we have to go, but, um, I will just say that I'm still not convinced, based on what I've heard, that, uh, the employees weren't getting double paid, at least for some hours. And it's hard to know, because there's still little, I don't know, is there any additional record-keeping that, like, when you approve time sheets for your employees, is there record-keeping for what hours they worked or what they didn't?
I have the schedules and that, if they worked.
So like, on the day that there was like the nine-hour city day, is that, or was there a...
I'm sorry, I, I can't hear you.
Was it the day that there was, there was a night, was, it was either nine-hour city day or nine-hour?
Well, we've got one, seven hours, um, Eric, um, uh, 12 hours at the city, and eight hours for Everheart on one day.
Yeah, so like the 12 hours for the city, like, I mean, do you have records of what they were scheduled to do for 12 hours in one day?
It would be on the schedules.
Okay, so I guess maybe then we should get a copy of the schedules as well for the 10-week period.
And that's my concern, is they're on the schedule for 11 hours, and then they're going to turn around and then bill Everheart for the, for seven, if they, which, they're not serving lunch for seven hours, something.
Yeah, so, and another concern is just that, I mean, one of the employees is related to your, the assistant recreation...
I would be very careful, Mr. Thompson. I will caution you to be very careful.
It's just very, I'm just saying, there's people that are concerned about the integrity of the city and that, the transparency, and I can't blame them at times. Thank you.
All right, this committee of the whole meeting is adjourned. We'll just take a brief, couple-minute recess, and we'll start with the council meeting.